Hamilton County Council Meeting on March 2, 2022. Could I have a roll call, please, Madam?
Yes, Brad Beaver.
Here.
Fred Glenn.
Present.
Amy Masalomni.
Present.
Steve Schwartz.
Present.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
You have a corn.
Thank you. If you'll all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. Fred Glenn.
I'll pray. Pray in your own way. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's had a chance to read. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So good.
Second.
There are no minutes to approve. No, they weren't done yet when your packets went out.
Okay.
One time.
Moving on to public comments. Is there anybody from the public who would like to come up and speak? Saying no, we'll move on to committee and officer reports. President, I do have some items I'd like to discuss. First thing I have is I received a note from Dan Stevens that the commissioners would like to have a joint session. They have asked for an available time on April 25th if possible. Does that work for everybody?
Were you talking during the day, at night? What are you talking about?
It's up to you guys.
I'm available.
They were willing.
After 10:00.
Maybe a noon meeting.
That would work for me.
April what?
25th.
April 25th.
That works for me.
At noon.
At noon.
They're catering.
You might check with Fred. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't know how much time. Do you have an idea how much time we should set aside? At least an hour, I would assume.
Not knowing what was the topic.
Is Dan here? Yeah, he's right there. Dan?
Do you have any idea what you envision the length of time based on the?
Gave a general description in the letter I gave to President Schwartz. Present in both short term and long term planning on present and future projects.
So if I'm not mistaken, the 25th is a commissioner's meeting?
I'm sorry?
Is the 25th a commissioner's meeting?
Yes, it is.
So noon might not work? I don't know if that runs typically till 4:00. So I have my.
The commissioners were willing to adjust their schedule that day to accommodate what time the council.
I would guess you better figure two hours.
Yes, 12 to 2:00.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect. Madam, if you make a note of that, please.
I do know the solid waste board meeting is that day for your at noon, but it doesn't last that long.
Well, I might have to adjust that one.
To 12:30, yeah, okay.
Also, the coroner gave me some information and he asked that I would pass this along to everybody. Basically, it discusses and shows you information over the last year, the caseload. Yeah, there could be extras.
I received you in my thing, too.
Did you? Okay. Perfect.
Is there a next?
We have that.
Is he wanting something here or is he just? No, just giving us an update. No, I think he's in good shape so far.
Mr. President, question, is this increase due to COVID or why our population is increased but not to warrant this increase in deaths?
You know, and I asked him about that specifically and he says that a lot of people that are moving here are older. So that was his COVID cases. I believe he's only had four or six actual COVID cases that the coroner dealt with.
For those in the audience, according to the documents we've received, there's a 32.58% increase over the same period last year. So that many more deaths, that's, you know, a third more deaths from last year, that's a lot.
Yeah, that sure is. And the last thing I have, and I'll pass some of these out, I received a letter from the Good Samaritan Network.
Yeah, I got that.
She did as well.
Yeah, we got this. Do you need this, Brad?
It was a nice thank you from Nancy Chance. And basically, I think we all know what she does there. She's the backup for the trustees for several things, rent, utilities, medicine. She's also the largest food supplier of the pantries in Hamilton County. Moving on on our agenda, Vice President.
Yeah, two items. I was in a meeting over in Noblesville, stopped in and just in some free time at the household hazardous waste director, Tal Jara, is that right, Brad?
Yeah.
All right. Did a wonderful job. If you haven't been over to the facility off of Pleasant Street and 37, they do just an amazing job of finding all the products that we probably are typically throwing in trash and finding a better use for it and trying to not put that into our environment. So I really wanted to just say thank you for that. And if I could just say one thing, they try and keep stats on where that comes from. So if you are planning to go and drop things off, please get online and sign up so they can collect that data on who's serving it. The second item, I had received some questions about where things were with the Career Center that we had approved money to stimulate that and move that forward. And I know that a lot of the questions stem with like, what are we doing, where are we moving forward? And so I got a really detailed response back. So, you know, people ask, what's the status of the formation and things like that? They're in the process of going through, working with the attorneys to incorporate and get registrations done. Superintendents have worked on a framework of long-term sustainability. You know, the next thing, the questions I had, are we on track? And it's absolutely, we're moving forward and things are working well to date. They're even raising money outside of the money that we put into the program with money coming from grants as well as employer participation that's in excess of $150,000. And lastly, I guess, was if you want to come forward and kind of answer some of the other questions, you know, who are the communities that are involved? And right now, everyone's very much engaged in it, but you know, I'd like to maybe if you could just add some of the little more details as far as the curriculum and what's happening this year as opposed to going forward.
Yeah, sure. So Mike, I'm the vice president of workforce strategy for the Hamilton County Economic Development Corporation. We were chosen as kind of the incubator for this project. So so far, even just this spring, we've launched a number of courses at different schools, the most notable of which is actually our robotics and automation course that launched at Noblesville and Hamilton Heights. Those are the two schools that opted into the project for the spring. We sold out the courses within two days of opening registration. We got corporate partners to donate equipment and we have corporate partners also designing curriculum and solutions. The students are all given a 3D printer that they then have to, that's in parts. They have to assemble it, code it, and do all the things to get it working. And then they actually have real world problems from corporations that they're using the printers to solve with actual people from those corporations coming into the classrooms to be engaged. So we're really proud of that one. And we're working directly on CNA pipelines for those students who are already getting those credentials in our schools to then be able to also work with employers next fall to move on to the next stages of those career paths and get further training prior to being done with school instead of, let's say, getting that credential their sophomore or junior year and then not having a next step forward. We also have advanced manufacturing apprenticeships, more healthcare apprenticeships being added. And to date, all school corporations are happy, the superintendents meet with Carrie Lively, who's our executive director for that project regularly. And she's been also meeting, I know, with a number of members of the council and the community to just keep everybody abreast of the project. And all the employers involved as well seem very happy. So we're just really appreciative of the support from the council and we're happy as well to provide further updates. Carrie's got some family health issues at the moment, which is why she's not here. But if you would like any further detailed updates, please send any questions to us and we'd be happy to push that forward.
Mike, just one of the other questions I wanted you to clarify. So obviously, we're taking, this is getting involved with at-prem, on-premises education at the different schools. As we look forward, I know one of the questions is how does someone that maybe might be in one school system to go and take a program elsewhere? Can you kind of just kind of where that stands? I know that, again, we're not even a program yet, we're still in the midst of making it, but there's so much momentum on this. I don't know if you want to just suggest that that's something that they're working on.
So all the schools have members at a more tactical level who are part of our advisory committee for this group. Transportation logistics is something they're actively working on. However, another priority for us as well is to keep registration as hyper local as possible. So if schools are filling demand for programs at their own facilities, we will continue to just expand those same offerings to more schools. And that's the current model that I think the superintendents are most interested in. That way, we don't have currently crowded schools seeing additional capacity going into them if they're already filling those classes. And we have a load that also doesn't overbear on the talent shortage that schools are also facing related to bus drivers. But yet again, the cross-school thing will likely be live probably fall '23. But the schools are all actively working on those arrangements and very open-minded about how that'll work if necessary. But maybe that the curriculum is so in demand.
Well, Mike, I just want to thank you. If anyone else has any questions, I can pass along the implication I got, but I just thought that was something that, you know, I'd received about five or six comments and I said, well, maybe that's something we can get an update. So I really appreciate you coming forward and certainly we'll keep her in our thoughts and prayers. That's it.
Okay. We'll move right along. Highway.
We met, we'll discuss those, we'll address the comments and issues that came up in our meeting.
Okay. Perfect. Moving on, finance.
We did not have a finance meeting this past month, but I did set up the last ARPA meeting that really the one highlight to pass along to you. We designated 2.5 million of this pot of money we got and 2.5 million of the next pot of money we're supposed to get sometime this year towards an affordable housing project in Noblesville. It's not actually a go yet, but if it jumps through all the other hoops, we've kind of earmarked $5 million for that particular project. And as it gets more firmed up, I'll pass it along to you, but we kind of earmarked $5 million for it. I wouldn't call it low income market rate type income project in Noblesville.
Workforce housing?
Attainable housing, which is affordable, but people can afford it.
Workforce housing.
Yeah.
That's what they refer to it.
Yeah, make up whatever name you want to.
That makes you feel good.
That's it.
Perfect. Thank you, Brad. Moving on, personnel, we did not meet. Go ahead.
Did not meet, no, but there is a poll and we'll discuss it in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything under miscellaneous?
Yes, sir. As you know, I sent, I spoke with John Dierdorf over the weekend. He did submit his formal resignation to the library board effective immediately of that date, which I believe was Saturday or Sunday. So we did receive two applications, if you will, for those appointments to come next month. But I know there's been some discussion about schedules and then we wanted to make sure that we advertise to the public if there are those members of the public that want the opportunity to be appointed to the board, give them the opportunity. So I guess we just need some direction from council as far as how we would like to proceed.
This would be for the Hamilton East Public Library, so they'd have to live in that jurisdiction. So individuals living in Carmel or Sheridan or Westfield are not eligible to apply for that seat.
Ken, didn't you express interest as posting this on the county website?
Yeah, I think that, you know, one of the questions that's come up throughout this traumatic process that we've went through here in the last six months is the need to make sure that we are communicating the expectations of people as they take on those things, whether it's making sure they're able to attend meetings, providing updates when asked and, you know, really holding the community. And there's a lot of people in our community that want to be involved, but keeping it in the forefront of their mind. So we're working on, I've been working with, I know he's in here somewhere, Chris Merton's on. There he is. On updating our website to include opportunities that are going to list out the different appointments and boards and committee opportunities that we have available as well as a description, term, lengths, and things of that nature so that people can, if interested, will have a place to go where they can look at it. And then from that, maybe even apply online so that we can, because one of the challenges we have, quite frankly, for the people in the audience is that we don't have many people that apply. And we want to engage and include our community in this process. It's good for all of Hamilton County to get all those voices heard.
Do you anticipate that being up and viewable by the time we meet next month?
No.
So I think from standard practice.
Because, well, just to, just be clear, he could get it done, but I have to create content that's actually writing out descriptions and all the other stuff that I'm not sure I'll be able to get complete by.
Okay.
I'll do my best.
Okay, well, I'm not putting a time frame, I just, it's okay, I wondered what we were looking at.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a future project.
I'd like to get it in place before we do the next run of appointments, which we usually typically will have things come on and off during the county year, but primarily it's near the close of the end of the year.
Agreed.
I like that idea, but for tonight, we probably need to decide when we're gonna start looking at these applications.
Well, let's move to next one.
That's, in my opinion, based on the fact that he's, there has been discussion over his resignation and whatnot. I think if we want to have a second member that's participating, we should do it sooner versus later rather than waiting until May. But I will listen to the other members of council because I know Fred is not going to be here.
And I just want to be clear, John's time on that group was, he was very instrumental in being involved during the expansion of the library and we really appreciate his service. He's had some family issues that certainly readjusted priorities in his life and so we really thank him for that time.
Okay. So is there an idea that we want to move and put that on April's agenda?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Madam, if you could add that to our agenda in April.
And then if there are members of the public that have interests, you can choose to email a member of council, the auditor, and I assume we can talk with Jamie Sander.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask, can we just have a social media posting or something letting the public know that this position's open and what the basic qualifications of residency and interest and experience are.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business. I don't think we have any unfinished, so we'll move to table, saying none, move on to new business. And the first item there is ERP, Workday Collaborative. I think we have some people here to, Chris, you can present?
No, I'm just going to introduce. As you know, we made a decision to move forward on the ERP system. Workday had an all-employee meeting this week and so they couldn't send anyone here. They wanted to. We do have someone from Collaborative, Maggie Acosta's here, from Collaborative Solutions, who is our implementer. And Workday came in remotely and they have a value presentation for us tonight. It's just a look at some of the efficiencies that we should gain by moving to a new, modern ERP system. And so we've got several people on here. Sam Ashbaugh and Jody Renzel are from Workday. Barry Dunn is also on the call as well, but Sam's going to be presenting and we'll make this full screen so you can see it hopefully. And they'll be available for questions. Jody, did you want to say anything before you get started?
No, just hello, very excited to be here, everybody. And so I'm the government account executive for Workday that is here to support the Hamilton project evaluation. And as Chris said, Sam will be presenting an overview here. I'm going to start sharing my screen in just a moment. And then Sam, do you want to start an introduction of yourself?
Yes, great, thank you, Jody. Great to be with everyone. My name's Sam Ashbaugh. I am with Workday's Value Management Team and we work with organizations such as yourself to help you identify and quantify the value of a Workday solution. So a little bit about my background and my perspective, prior to joining Workday. So a little bit about my background and my perspective, prior to joining Workday, I spent the last 20-plus years in local government. More recently, I was the Chief Financial Officer of the City of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, my hometown. But I've also consulted with several dozen governments across the country, helping them to evaluate financial and HR systems and, you know, make the journey to modernizing that the county is embarking on itself. All right.
All right, well, are you seeing my screen now?
Yes, thank you. And so for the next few minutes, we wanted to give you a little bit more sense of the Value Management Organization and how we'll work with the county as a Workday customer to help you realize the full potential of your investment. Talk about the case for change for Hamilton County. We spent some time talking to leaders in finance, HR and IT to better understand, you know, what your strategies and goals are, but also understand some of the key pain points and opportunities for improvement. And we'll highlight some of those for you as well. And then finally, just want to share some additional information about how other Workday government customers realize value and what the tangible improvements that our government organizations and clients are able to achieve. And these are things that the county should, you know, strive for during your implementation project. Next slide, please. Okay, as I mentioned, you know, from the Value Management Organization, you know, we're committed to our customer's success. So it's not just about helping you make this case for change or signing on a contract. What we do is, you know, we're committed to your long-term success. So one of the next steps that we would, you know, suggest for the county is to engage in what we call a baseline assessment. And what this allows you to do is to really understand what the key performance indicators for your various processes are. So it may take X days to complete a certain process today. Then what we would do is come back to you, usually after you're fully live for 12 to 18 months, and then we do what we call a value realization study. And this allows the, the county to be able to measure and see what the tangible outcomes are, you know, as a result of the implementation of the new system. And, you know, what this does, the benefits for the county are several. First of all, it helps you to celebrate your success. This is a major enterprise transformation project and you really want to understand and communicate, not only to elected officials, but staff and employees throughout the county, you know, how things are different across finance and HR. But it also helps you to identify where are some areas maybe you want to focus on some more improvement opportunities. It's a journey, not a sprint, and so you always want to look for continuous improvement. Next slide, Jody. In speaking with leaders from finance, HR and IT, there were kind of four major goals or strategies that kind of bubbled to the surface, which were kind of driving the case for change. The first is improving your business process. So really wanting to automate and streamline all of your processes from finance, accounting, procurement, HR and payroll. Second, it's really about getting better information about your people, your finances and your operations. So really have an information at your fingertips so you can make better, faster decisions in the moment. Third, we heard a lot, a key theme was improving the experience for employees. So from the time maybe somebody, you know, is an applicant and applying for a job with the county, to once they come on board and all throughout their life cycle with the county. So really being able to give the employees the overall experience and tools that they need to do their jobs and to do them efficiently and effectively. And finally, near to dear to my heart, as a former government finance official, is really about strengthening financial stewardship. So really getting better insight into, you know, revenues and expenditures, what's going on procurement, how are we paying our vendors? Those are all important things to really solidifying the county's financial operations. However, if you go to the next slide, one of the things that we saw is that there are a number of factors that are limiting the ability, the county's ability to really improve the way that you deliver finance and HR payroll services. I won't go into all these in detail, but just wanted to highlight a few. One of the key things we heard was a reliance on shadow systems or manual processes. And that, you know, creates a lot of, not only inefficiencies, but it also creates issues for having, you know, multiple versions of the truth. You have a lot of information that is out there floating outside of your current, your core systems, and that really impedes your ability to make those decisions when you need to make them. This also leads to challenges with usual adoption and satisfaction. I have a slide in, in a few moments. We're really, the county was able to rate their current systems' capabilities across all the finance and HR areas, and then we were able to compare that to actual Workday customer experience. And the gap is significant, but it also points to a lot of opportunities for improvement. And a final thing that I wanted to highlight is, you know, a lack of self-service and mobile capabilities. You know, in a day and hour where, you know, you need to be able to do your work anytime, anywhere, from any device, that's a major challenge for the county, not with your systems not being able to support those types of innovative work approaches. And it's also helps to provide information to employees and managers so they can, you know, have the data jobs on a daily basis. Next slide, please. One of the things that I really like is, you know, hearing straight from the, the employees themselves. So the managers and employees and finance, HR and IT, you know, what are some of the challenges that you're experiencing? But also, what are some of the opportunities? What, what do you hope to achieve, you know, with a new and modernized system? And these are just actual quotes from a discovery session that we held with county officials, really getting to understand, you know, what some of their challenges and pain points are. And you can see, you know, some of the things that, you know, kind of resonate. A lot of themes such as, we can get the job done, but it takes a lot of time and effort to do it. There's a lot of redundant processes throughout the finance and HR operations. And that, that creates a lot of inefficiencies and challenges for, you know, employees, managers and leaders throughout the county. Next slide.
If I could interrupt here for just a moment before we move forward.
Yes, please.
You know, I think that council's had a chance to read through a lot of this and possibly really don't need to go through the rest of all this packet. Is that kind of the feel for the council? That if we have more questions, we could do this in a work session?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we'd probably be more comfortable doing that in a work session than in this format, if that's all right.
Yeah, happy to, whatever you need.
That's what we'd like to do. But we'd like to thank you for your time and your staff this evening.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We're gonna move on now to item B, it's KPMG, it's a project update. Alex Rothman.
I was having a hard time here.
Thank you. Hi, good day, so Brendan Davis, I'm a director with KPMG's Strategy Practice. While Alex is getting set up to do the majority of the presentation, I'm gonna take some guidance from your previous comments and be pretty quick. I have overall responsibility for delivery of the work that we're doing in the study and the, and delivery of, and the quality of the work that's being delivered. Just wanted to say a few comments to start off, wanted to thank the departments for how forthcoming they've been in terms of our ask, our ask for their time, our ask for their data. I want to let you know that we really see the project as quite low risk at the moment, so we see delivery of, of our deliverables coming in the next few weeks. Although there have been a few delays, those delays have just been as a normal course of business because the departments don't know what we're asking them for and they've been really good in finding the data that we want, getting the data that we want, hunting it down, creating new data sets and getting us connected with the right people. So as far as risk in terms of delivery, we see that very minimal. And then also in terms of what I think you may care about quite, quite a bit, money. We are on budget, which we care about a lot, so want to just put that out there. So Alex Rothman, he's the manager, leading the majority of the work day-to-day in the weeds with your department. On this trip, we're here to present with you, but we're also here to be with the sheriff and his staff in the jails, go visit some of the different community correction centers as well and, and get the bigger on-the-ground presence in terms of dealing with all the people that we've been speaking with for, for weeks and months now.
Thanks, Brendan. So we've got three parts to our presentation, but again, if any of this feels like you'd like to move faster or slower, please just let me know. So we'll start with a quick overview of the key activities we've undertaken by department. I see this is a little bit small, but I can, I can give you a verbal summary. So as you all may know, we started first with probation and community corrections, and thus we're further along in our review of those two departments. We've completed all of our interviews. We have, we initially provided both departments with the data request. We've received the response to that data request and are now working with the departments on a few follow-up items, but everyone's been very responsive. And we are conducting site visits this week to facilities at both departments. So we anticipate having the two, the reports complete, the initial drafts complete for probation and community corrections within about the next month. And then we'll move through a validation process with both departments to make sure we have consensus or at least everyone feels heard around the recommendations in those reports. Sheriff, we started more recently, we kicked off about a month ago, so we're still moving through our interviews. We have received a response to the data request and we're working through the many, many documents we've received. Thank you, Sheriff, for, for that. So that review is on track. Our timeline has that being completed at the end of April. So just to have a visual of that, the project runs through the end of May. So aiming again to have drafts of probation and community corrections wrapped up by the end of March. Sheriff in April, that leaves us May to kind of brief you all and any other stakeholders on the outcomes of our reports. If there are no questions on the timeline, I can move into some high-level opportunity areas that we are looking at at this point.
What is the expectation for when they come back with a deliverable? Are we gonna be sitting down and having a work session? How does that, how does that?
We should have a work session and, and I mean, the, the timing is what, you know, we have to have stuff that we, you know, when we have budget orders and that type of stuff to put out. So, you know, we should have a type of work session to be ready to be, to, to implement that, you know, give our budget instructions out to department heads.
That's pretty soon.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So when you get that information, if you could.
We can coordinate a work session with, we can.
With our auditor would be probably the best way to go and then.
Yeah, it looks like you guys are moving along, they'll be good, so that's good.
Absolutely.
You came a long way, so what, what else do you have here?
Yes, and, and perhaps we can connect about that later. If there's particular timelines you'd like us to meet, let us know and I'm sure we can, we can get you updates ahead of those. So thinking about opportunity areas, again, all of our recommendations remain in progress. We haven't finished any of the three departments yet, but we expect providing recommendations, four types of recommendations. So the first is cost savings or cost avoidance, so that's both straightforward. Areas where we think the county has an opportunity either to have immediate savings or to kind of avoid cost increases in the near term. We can return to that when we talk a little bit about workload and staff utilization. The second type of opportunity we'd be highlighting is operational efficiency. So these are changes that may not actually add up to dollars, but they could reduce errors. They can help keep your staff happier, happier by making sure folks feel like their time is well-used, that processes make sense and are efficient. Management effectiveness is the third type of opportunity or recommendation we may make. That's to get as much data and information into the hands of your department heads, into your hands as county leadership, so that you have the information you need in making budgetary and strategy decisions as a county. And our fourth area deals with budget processes and structures, thinking about grant utilization, taking a look at the financial aspect of each department and seeing if we can be of use there.
Is the expectation that those will be delivered to us before talked with the departments? Or they, or they gonna talk to the departments before?
That, that's a good question, yeah. Yeah, I mean, the thing is, we, we want to know what those recommendations are, even if they're presented to the department heads. So if you have some recommendations and you're gonna present that stuff to the department heads, we would like to know what those recommendations were, even if they decide to get those implemented before they come back to us. So we do want to see that kind of stuff.
Yeah, if, if I could just say, you know. On behalf of KPMG, so our independence in terms of providing information back to you is gonna be that all our recommendations presented will come back in our final report. But as part of overall change management program, we want to make sure that departments are heard, their input is, is heard.
Yeah.
And if there is solid information as to why something may or may not, shouldn't be done on their part, that you also have that information when we.
Right, and then it comes back to us, if there was anything that you recommended, they implemented before it came back to us. I mean, it could have something that says, you know, recommended, not yet, no action item, you know, this one's recommended. You know, right next to it says implemented. So we kind of have that information when it's presented back to us, do you understand?
Yeah, and absolutely, and how, what we will do for you and other, other counties have asked for is that we will frame what the recommendations mean and, and, and how I could say that departments help do that would be to the effect of, let's say, we will say this may have a high impact, our initial impression on budget. And we may have a discussion with the sheriff and he may say, well, here's why not. This is your local specific case. And we may be influenced, again, with our independence and come back with the same recommendation and say, we're convinced this would have a medium impact. So the recommendation doesn't change, but our perspective of that recommendation in terms of if it affects budget or operational effectiveness, we still rely on the departments who know their business best to influence us and prove that, that, you know, how, how should that be presented back to you?
Well, I wasn't from the impression, Fred, that, you know, they, they get the report, the department heads may get a report, that they're gonna go out and just implement what, you know.
Yeah, I'm not saying that, but.
Sorry, I misunderstood what you said.
Yeah, that's not what he, what they were saying is that, right. But so, some of the stuff he was saying, there, there might be stuff they can implement before it comes back. I just want to know what the, I want to know, and I think I could, I can, the council will agree, we do want to know what the initial recommendations were.
Absolutely.
What they were, you know, initially.
The last meeting we had had.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and absolutely, we've certainly seen in other counties, we've made presentations to departments and they've gone ahead. And when we come back in settings like this, the department heads are, we're working on it already. That's a good outcome as well. So, you know, when, when recommendations are received, we do see departments start to move forward, that's, that's their decision. But, you know, that would not affect our presentation of the recommendations to you.
Okay.
Thank you, Brendan. We have included, kind of as an in-flight update, a few key opportunity areas that we're looking at at each department. Again, these are recommendations that are, that are continuing to be, to evolve and be fleshed out as we complete our work. But to run through two or three for each department. With probation, we are looking at the org structure and the idea there is to allow the department's executive staff to really focus on strategic issues, the most pressing matters facing the department, and delegate more routine matters, lower priority matters to the, to a supervisor or manager position. Similarly, we are working on a recommendation as it relates to maximizing staff utilization and enhancing workload management. So the idea there is you want to have data-driven processes for assessing an individual's workload and rightsizing it. You want to make sure your staff isn't overwhelmed, but you also want to have clear performance targets. That's particularly important for a county that's growing so rapidly. If we're expecting that demand for services will increase, this is an example of cost avoidance where this may allow your current staff to get more done and, at a time where it's difficult to hire and difficult to retain, allow you to avoid growing your staff at the, at, as quickly as it might otherwise. And finally, with probation, we're looking at ways we can be helpful, recommendations we can make as it relates to their collaboration with the Department of Children's Services and juvenile probation. What we've heard there is that many of the youth who are under probation supervision also have interactions with DCS, but that agency is run out of the state. That's a challenge we often see in counties of, how do you break down those silos, particularly when departments are operating at different levels? But that's an area we are, we intend to be helpful. Moving on to community corrections, we have our site visit to the residential facility on Friday, which I'm very much looking forward to, but that's a big focus area for us in our review and looking at staffing optimization there, particularly given the challenges we understand the facility has faced during, due to the COVID-19 pandemic and its impact on recruiting and retention. Correctional staffing is an area of focus for us, so we'll be looking, we expect to have recommendations there. And similarly, about enhancing technology utilization. So how can the department deploy a technology like GovPay, which I know other county agencies use, or potentially even SmartLink, to more efficiently carry out its workload? Finally, for sheriff, we are early on in our review, haven't even completed our interviews yet, but four areas that have come up that we intend to investigate throughout the review are thinking about the workforce mix. So are there opportunities to shift work to civilian staff if they are, if they don't require a law enforcement back? If they are, if they don't require a law enforcement background? Whether that be data, data analysis or administrative responsibilities? Does that allow you to focus your law enforcement staff on public safety duties? Looking at utilization and demand management, both on the patrol side and in the jail? Thinking about your staffing by time of day? Do you have enough people when it's busy? And are you able to draw down your staff during lulls? And with commissary and kitchen, looking at different service delivery models, contracting out? We'll deliver a cost benefit analysis related to that, as well as some recommendations related to fleet management. So, I know that was a lot of information quickly. Are there any questions for either myself or Brendan?
Any questions, Council?
Sheriff, can you give us your thoughts so far?
We've had just initial interviews and that type of thing, so I don't really have work product necessarily to, to judge it on.
Well, I mean, there's a cohesive communication as well so far, everything good?
Yeah, I mean, the interviews seem to be going fantastic and I think the data has been provided to them and just kind of waiting to see how, how things go. We're optimistic.
From a technology perspective, obviously, anything that touches any of the departments, Chris over there is probably going to be very interested in what your thoughts are. So, I would, I mean, when, when you're going to look at options like that, I would suggest, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I would think he'd be someone we'd want to engage in any kind of recommendation like that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely merge that technology and data and analytics conversation as kind of one conversation for you, you know, how is information getting to stakeholders? Just in closing, you know, just to give you kind of a preview of, of some of our initial thoughts on where we're headed and we will probably come back and ask some of you questions about this is, you have a growing county, which means more services and departments that are really proud of the services that they are providing and how they do business. Criminal justice is an interesting business where we can look at a business as-is and the demand that it has. They may be low staff and that demand may be perceived one way. But for example, if community correction says, we wish we had this program that reduced recidivism, well, there you go, you've just increased demand by, by creating a new program. But that program may be needed and have some long-term effect. So, the level of service that you want to provide as a community does impact where you go from a cost savings perspective, a lowering the cost of services perspective. And that's some things that we really want to think through deeply. We don't, we want to make sure and come back with a set of recommendations that serves the county and its citizens and it doesn't just look to creating kind of across-the-board efficiencies. So, we want to have, have a, have a spectrum of recommendations that is what Hamilton County wants from the department perspective, from the community perspective, from the council's perspective as well. And so, further conversations need to be developed to ensure that we put recommendations in all of those buckets for you.
Yeah, we appreciate that and it, this, I mean, just looking at what you did, this was very formative. I thank you guys for making the trip here and, and coming to see us. I mean, I know that you're supposed to do, but I still want to thank you. Some of the stuff you look at, you know, there's going, you look at one section of that, that's council, okay? We can make that, we can make those types of decisions. But then, there's another section there, that's, that's total, total executive body commissioners. Another one, the other one, there's a, there's a sheriff. So, I mean, we're going to have to bring everybody together when, when these recommendations come. That's going to be another key part of timing, to be able to, to bring these people, bring us together, the decision-makers together on your recommendations, then to be able to give out budget instructions from there.
So, we could work with Dan on the structure of our report to make sure that if it does have to be parceled out for you to be able to see that clearly, we could do that as well.
And that is also in, in the timeline, one of the reasons we have the whole month of May held for those kind of county-wide briefings, so that we can meet with stakeholders.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on on our agenda, C, approval of vendor claims.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Moving on to D on your agenda, it's grant, grant appropriations and transfers.
Those are always pretty, so moved. Make motion to combine one through four. We do that?
I will second that motion.
Motion to add items one, two, three and four together. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 10 on your agenda, it's additional appropriations and reductions. At this time, I will open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations. Item A on page two on your agenda, it's Fund 1,000, County General requesting $5,317,584. Commissioners, the first item is Assistant Veteran Service Officer. It's a job amendment, description and transfer.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
Yeah, the way this is supposed to work, when you want a new full-time employee, it's supposed to come to the council first. You don't just tramp, you don't just change a part-time position to a full-time position.
That was, I had asked that question and I, I was told otherwise, Brad, so.
Yeah, we told you that.
I did.
Full-time positions don't come to the council first?
A new position has always come to the council first. Part-time going full-time hasn't ever come to you first.
Yeah, okay.
So, you guys get, you guys give us some directions on what you want to do and we'll, we'll follow it.
I understand that, I, I will, I will disagree.
As, as, as we continue to discuss this, this is the type of thing that I'm hoping that, you know, we're, we'll make decisions that obviously want to maintain the service levels of our community. But having the, the metrics in place from a, from a, a study like KPMG is doing, it's going to allow us to give understanding of why we need to add certain people and how many, it's going to give a little bit more depth to this, so.
You're hoping for a lot, ain't you?
I am.
I think Brad's only, I mean, when we talk about, we're adding the benefit load, right? Which, which then creates something different. And I get that if it hasn't been done in the past and it was new positions, I think that that just adds more from a financial perspective and maybe that's, kind of goes into the thought process of why we ask for the new positions to come to us first anyways. But it's either here nor there. You have a motion on the table, so.
Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Please make note. Okay, moving on to item B, it's an additional appropriation for $698,802.
So moved.
Second.
That's insurance, isn't it?
It is insurance. Any questions on that? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C, it's an additional for $50,000 for the Shepherd Center. I think there was a error here that we overlooked.
Second.
What is this for?
It's like a not-for-profit.
I know it's a not-for-profit that we discussed in budget hearings.
It was missed at budget time and so, there was some indecision and so, I'm putting this on at the request of what we found.
Okay, we did give them money, we, they were appropriating money in budget.
There are two different, there are two different monies that go to this center. I went back through the minutes, I could not find it. In order for me to move forward, I'm asking you to approve this additional.
I want to know what the appropriate, understand what the appropriations is for. We got a second, right? Yes.
It's for the Shepherd Center Counseling Program.
Okay, and how much did we give to them in budget hearings, is the question? Didn't we, do you remember what that was?
Judge, do you recall, was it for, for that program?
Under the court's budget, we gave them, I think fifty.
So, they're up to $100,000 a year, Shepherd Center.
Where did this come from? When did this slide in here?
What do you mean?
I'm sorry, I'm really confused.
Yeah.
Well, they made a, a separate presentation to us on the not-for-profit day. The presentation that was made for the 50,000 for the Shepherd Center under the court's budget was made during the court's budget time. That is for their operations. This is, the 50,000 here was, they had a, they had a separate application. It was on the agenda.
That could, it could be on the agenda, but if, if there was dialogue, I can't fathom that the county, I mean, and I could be totally wrong, but I can't fathom that we sat here and had a discussion and said, we'll go ahead and allocate the 50,000 under the court's budget after we heard that. But then, you're also, I'm not saying that they weren't on the agenda, but how is it that it couldn't have been confused that they were presenting further on that 50,000?
Yeah, because they got, there were $50,000 requests under that, not $100,000 requests, no matter which one.
I don't remember $100,000, sorry, I'm, I'm just trying to recall. I don't remember $100,000 in total. I feel like we would have talked about that and maybe I'm wrong, maybe we looked past it, but.
Yeah.
This seems like it just was slid in here. I didn't get any calls on the fact that there was an error, nothing. So, I don't, I don't know, I'm.
I did not, I did not know there was an error until.
But you signed this, right, to be on the agenda?
Yes, at the request of Dan Stevens and, and Robin.
Yes.
I thought it was voted on by the council.
Okay, sorry, I thought that you requested it, I apologize, based on the sponsorship.
Right, no, I had not.
So, how did you uncover this then?
It's been three weeks. It came, I, I don't know, Dan, if they were wanting payment? I forget, it, it, it landed on my desk.
I just don't remember this.
I think Shepherd Center was wondering where their.
Where their money was.
Money was for the program that they defined that was not part of the Grant Match Program, which was down below on the bottom of the not-for-profit. Both amounts are $50,000, so it's hard to discuss them individually and know exactly which one you're talking about. The $50,000 that I think you all are thinking you approved in budget time was for the Grant Match. The 50,000 for, I don't know if it's a new program, it is a new program. Counseling service at the center is what I think got missed in the discussion.
I, 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 if it was, if I was, you know, under the impression that, because this is a sticky point and just to give the, anybody watching, just kind of a update on why we're having this discussion like this. This is a, you know, it's one of the smallest parts of the things we do in budget hearings, but it takes the longest for us to go through these not-for-profits because we're taking taxpayers' money and we're picking and choosing which not-for-profits to give your money to when there's probably 200 not-for-profits out there. This one right there, this one right here did not request $100,000 that day. We approved $50,000.
And if they did, then they did not make it clear in their secondary presentation apparently that they were asking for another $50,000 on top. Because I, I think that does create a little, and if you said it's a new program, so when did this program start, right? Because we went through budget hearings in August or September or whatever it was. So, they had planned.
At, at the request that we separate on the Grant Match, Shepherd Sep, Center had a $50,000 where they go through the Guardianship Project. The Guardianship Project had been up and running for several years. That came before us and it was requested that it would be put into the court's budget because it was matched by the Supreme Court as to those amounts of money. So, that's what it was done for the first time this year. That was appropriated during the court's budget, just like Veterans Court, just like all, all the other courts. Okay, so it was under the court's budget, so there's the 50,000. Then they came in on an additional new program that they're working under mental health with paramedicine and they're working, and they submitted the, the items to us on the not-for-profit day. And that not-for-profit day, they said they wanted a new program to help the elderly that they were coming up with, with paramedicine throughout the county. They went ahead and had the process there of how they were talking to paramedicine in all of our county, how because of the isolation, because of COVID, we're having more problems with the elderly. They wanted to provide those services. She made the presentation on the not-for-profit, I think she might have been the last person that made the presentation. But it had nothing to do with the Guardianship Project.
So, that I, so that I can understand, they serve, it's, it's like, it's like holding two separate contracts and doing two separate things. One is already included in a budget that we appropriated, approved at a certain level. And then, this other one was a new program that going out, was like another contract that they're coming out. And so, what, which one are we funding? Which one was funded? They got $50,000, which one did they get paid for? Was through their, through the.
The Grant Match was through.
Can I motion to table? I'd like to motion to table for next month, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moving seconded to table.
Everyone can go back and watch the video.
That's exactly what I would like to do, is go back through the information so that we don't make an incorrect.
Yeah, and this is obviously something that needs to be brought up in budget hearings.
What I'm, what I, what I was getting at was that they were paid $50,000 per budget and we approved them.
Technically, once you call for a, a table, we go immediately to the vote.
Okay.
No more discussion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, who's going to chase this down?
I can work on it. I mean, I feel like, I have no problem with that.
And will you be able to get back with us by our April meeting?
I would hope that I could get back to you within the next 48 hours. I don't try, I try not to take a lengthy period of time to report back.
No problem, then maybe we could get an email. Perfect, okay. Moving on, our agenda here is item D and it's additional $362,500. And this is for the Bridge of Flowers. And the city of Noblesville approved this on, they are a partner for the other half of the 700 and some thousand. They voted on February 22nd.
We need a motion to second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, wait, now we can continue. Also, the commissioners met on Monday, February 28th, they approved this as well. So, for discussion, we have City Council, Noblesville City Council, Megan Wiles here tonight. Megan, welcome.
Good evening, welcome, I'm Megan Wiles. I'm president of the Noblesville City Council this year. And with me is Matt Light, our deputy mayor, and Ali Kropsky, our city engineer.
Hi, Ali.
Hi.
The, the Bridge of Flowers project was brought to both the city of Noblesville and to Hamilton County by the Gordon family. Dick Gordon and his family have Gordon Marketing Group. They've been longtime Noblesville residents and business owners. And they saw a, a bridge elsewhere throughout the United States that's called Bridge of Flowers. And they thought, what a beautiful addition that would be for the Logan Street Bridge with the bump-out section that was built the last couple of years. Again, another joint project between the city of Noblesville and the county. So, after presentation to both the county and the city of Noblesville, it was agreed, yes, we like this idea, let's move forward and come up with some designs of what would actually work on that bridge structure and that the bridge engineers would approve. And so, after many discussions and, and design versions, we've come up with this final proposal. The Bridge of Flowers has created a not-for-profit group. They're willing to donate $75,000 for the initial installation of the equipment. President Schwartz, did you share with the group photos of what the design looks like?
I did, everybody did receive a packet and thank you for that.
Okay, all right. So, the idea is to have the, the planters and the bench seedings, the pergolas, the lighting, the irrigation systems installed. And then, the Bridge of Flowers group will then do the annual maintenance of installing new seasonal flowers and doing it actually throughout the seasons. The city of Noblesville is committed to supporting this project and yes, the council has approved to contribute up to $362,500. And then, we have also committed to the ongoing maintenance of that area. So, when it comes to additional watering, any cleaning of trash pickup, snow removal in the wintertime, the city of Noblesville is committed to providing that service.
Is there any questions for Megan?
The city's going to front the money for the design or the first 70,000?
Yeah.
On top of your 360?
So, yeah, we are going to, we are going to front the $75,000 from, from the Bridge of Flowers Not-for-Profit Group and then they will pay the city back.
And then, we'll go to construction?
Yes.
Okay.
So, do we, is there going to be like an MOU put in place between the county and the city for that maintenance and long-term agreement?
Yes, and that has been put together and, and was approved by both the Noblesville City Council and by the commissioners on Monday.
Yep, we got a copy in the, in the.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just getting to the point that we're approving a maintenance thing without having paid, without having agreed on the projects. We have to fund it, right? So, we're kind of getting a little ahead of ourselves, aren't we?
We're last on the list. Just literally, we're last on the list.
Any further questions for Megan Wiles? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Look forward to spring, for sure. Okay. Moving on. Moving on on our agenda, item two, ISS, there's a one forty-four amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the one forty-four.
So, uh, second?
Moved and seconded. Chris Martin's welcome.
Hello?
Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B is an additional, uh, four million, two hundred and six thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents.
So moved.
Second, what's that for, Amy?
It's the ERP project with collaborative and some workday, and it's basically paying for your first year.
Ah.
Your implementation, subscriptions, device using, your...
First year, first year mostly implementation, but the largest portion of it is implementation.
IT guy's expensive, isn't he, guys?
Any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
But we have discussed this, though.
Seventy million, nine...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sheriff, there's a one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item four is the Soil and Water Conservation District, there's a one forty-four amendment, a job description transfer.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded.
The way I understand it, this is to, uh, the amendment so they can pay more for a part-time person?
Yeah, the, the job responsibilities dictate that.
It's not changing the pay.
They're not going to be a full-time person?
They're not full-time, no. Oh, yes.
All those in favor?
Part-time and they put a, they made it a comment, see part-time, so that how it went up.
They're having high turnover in that position, they wanted to have someone that could stay there longer in a part-time role.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, there's a probation one forty-four amendment.
Seventh.
A second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Madonna, for being here. Item B, it's Fund One Zero Two Three, the HCAA requesting four mil, or, I'm sorry, four thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-four cents.
We can combine one and two.
All seconded.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion here?
No.
That's that insurance for the airport.
Airport, exactly. Thank you.
All good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve now.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, C, it's Fund Eleven Twenty-Seven, it's the Conventioner and Visitor and Tourism, requesting one million dollars. And I believe...
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Their fun, Ken. This is, um, just, uh, in essence, they, they are using money that they, 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 in excess of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they got through last year above what their expectation was. Uh, that do mainly, I think, charge of their, uh, fiscal planning and conservative sort of budgeting that they do. Um, but they wanna use that money to pay off, uh, the bond, and they've asked for, uh, they've got additional monies that they have 'cause they're heading this quarter to get to that one million dollar that they, that they've collected. And they're gonna use that to go against the bond that we're gonna be paying off later in the, uh, agenda. And I think, Brenda, you're here, I probably not done a very good job of explaining it, but I just wanted to keep it simple.
Isn't it any questions?
I don't have any questions. Perfect. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Ken, looks like you're on the hot seat again. A fund of eleven seventy-one.
Every, every time we see Ken's name, it's a million dollars.
Well, Amy had four million here.
You guys have been prepared for that for a while.
This is part of the discussion, so moved.
Second.
Uh, yeah, this is, uh, for, uh, reappropriation for right-of-way acquisition.
And we're all aware of that project.
Yes, we are. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect, motion carries. Item E, Fund Eleven Seventy-Six dash eleven seventy-three zero-two, or, I'm sorry, zero-seven zero-two, it's Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Transfer, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred...
Transfer.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I thought I heard a second. Fund, uh, twelve nineteen thirteen zero-one, it's the Park and Recreation, they're requesting twelve thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents.
So moved.
Second, who's our liaison with them?
I am.
You are?
Mm-hmm.
Probably want twelve thousand dollars more.
Well, I need to read back.
It's said liability.
Insurance, yeah.
Insurance, right here.
Okay, good enough.
Solid waste in the aviation.
Yep. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. There's also a transfer for four hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty-four.
Didn't even let the man finish.
That's okay. Got a motion and a second.
Same thing, it's what we combined last time.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Item G, it's Fund Twelve Twenty-Two, it's Communications, one forty-four amendment.
So moved.
So, with this, I will assume that they have money in their budget.
Yeah, it's, mm-hmm, just...
All good?
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item H, it's the Fund Forty-three Zero Seven Two Zero One Zero, it's the US Thirty-One Ramps, it's in a reappropriation. Is there any questions on this?
So moved.
Second.
Um, just for quick, quick questions, uh, the, the POs only last for two years, and so you have to re-up them? So this is an expiring PO that we are re-appropriating dollars for? So we've already, the money was already there, it's had to re-appropriate it.
Fun times.
Thank you, Ken.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Fund, uh, forty-five zero-eight two-zero-one-eight, HRCR, RD Lit Revenue Bonds, they're requesting twenty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-two dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Why does it say P, Ken, explain why this one says PO when this project's pretty much done?
Well, good question, 'cause I asked that same one.
Okay.
So as part of, as part of the, uh, effort that you have to go, and you have to have a, a warranty on the trees and things that you put in place. Uh, the, this is to, we're gonna be having probably this one, 'cause we have, uh, three years we have to have them in place before they can be removed. So this is the maintenance of, of those types of things. You can expect that we're gonna have another one of these probably in a year or two.
Okay.
It's part of the mitigation process.
Brad, is that right?
Yeah, they planted, was it Kautaui, they planted the trees? Because we take trees out for Loog's Way, we have to plant them somewhere else, and so we planted them. And we have to keep them alive, and they didn't do so well, so...
A lot of that was due to high water and deer. Deer like those little trees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item is J, it's Fund Four Six Zero One Nine Five Two Seven. It's the two thousand and eleven HCVCB, it's a sinking fund requesting one million, nine hundred thousand.
It's encumbered.
So moved.
Second.
Brad, this is your, this is the bond payoff.
Uh-uh.
This is the bond payoff.
I'm sorry, can you give me the motion and second that?
My motion.
And then second.
I think second, yeah.
That's the, the railroad bond?
This is the, uh, for the, is it railroad that was for? Brenda, do you wanna come forward?
Brenda's just here.
Okay, this is that two, two thousand and eleven tourism bond that had, was backed by lit, but then we had it in our local agreement with you to, to cover it with, uh, launching tax, do you remember that bond?
What did we buy with it?
We bought Grand Park, um, Center for Performing Arts, uh, amphitheater, and Fisher's helped, I, we didn't buy all of them. And then we bought the Nickel Plate Arts Center.
Okay.
And, oh, and we also, we also did a half million dollars out, um, Stoughtown Kautaui Park for the Native American, um, exhibit.
So, so with this, is it paid off or just paid down?
Paid off. It's at the ten, it was at the ten-year call in June, right? And so its rate goes up significantly this year. Um, and earlier, you, as Ken noted, we both had, um, we both went into twenty-one conservatively budgeting. We had really reduced expenses, and so as a result, we find ourselves in a position to be able to pay off the note with our existing cash on hand. This is a combination of the Tourism Commission and Hamilton County Tourism, Inc., doing this together. But we left all of the money at the Tourism Commission level because they're the note obligee, obligor? I'm not a, I'm not an attorney. Uh, they're obligated to the note.
Right, good by me.
So they're, they will act, they've already transferred the money to the county in anticipation of this. I'm sure you'll give it back if they don't pass it, right? Um, and there is, there, it'll be, there'll be a settlement at the end to figure out what the final number is, right, Robin? It just depends. Um, the, you know, the biggest risk on this is, um, you know, we're paying off our credit card, you know? Which is more expensive than paying off our credit card monthly bill, am I making sense? And so, but I think in the long run, it frees up two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars a year that we can use productively. It gets two million dollars off of your debt load. And, um, I think it's, it's, it's lemonade out of lemons, is really what this one is.
I like it, that's a smart move.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you so much.
Item K, it's Fund Four Eight One Five Two Zero Two One.